I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of Thursday, January 7th, 2021, to order. Would the Clerk please take the role?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Miratado?
Here.
Trustee Pojack?
Here.
And Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Allegiance. To the flag. United States of America. To the Republic. Where we stand. One nation. Under God. Invisible. With liberty.
Before we start tonight, we have... The Governor of the State of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, restricting individuals to gatherings of 10 persons or less. And all of the Village of Glendale Heights is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the Village President of the Village of Glendale Heights has determined that an in-person meeting for the January 7th, 2021 Village Board and Committee of the Whole meetings is not practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the trustees of the Village Board participating in the January 7th, 2021 Village Board meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. This was signed by me, Linda Jackson, Village President of the Village of Glendale Heights, dated January 7th, 2021. Everybody can hear?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
You can't see everybody, though.
That's a blessing.
I just see you, Linda, Sharon and Mary, that's it.
Me too.
I see Mike.
I see Mike, Light.
Yes, I just don't see Pat and Bill.
There we are.
They're here. They're just at far ends of the dais. Trustee Schmidt, would you like to start us off, please?
I will, Mayor, thank you. As a reminder to residents, please do not shovel, snow blow, or plow any snow onto village streets. This will help ensure our streets are clean and clear of any snow for safe driving. If you have any questions, please call the Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. The Village of Glendale Heights is collecting broken or unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off at the Public Works Garage located at 1635 Glen Allen Road on weekdays from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and lengths of LED lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, LED lights, and extension cords. For more information on holiday lights recycling, please call (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join the Village of Glendale Heights in celebrating National Salute to Hospitalized Veterans Month by participating in the Valentine's for Veterans collection effort. Annually, the Village delivers beautifully written and decorated valentines collected from our community to the Illinois Veterans Home and Veterans Hospital. Drop off your valentines at Village Hall by Wednesday, February 3rd, to ensure a timely delivery for Valentine's Day. Please do not decorate your cards with glitter, include social media contact information, or include envelopes with cards. Should you have any questions, please call Nicole Lewis at (630) 909-5327. The Saturday, January 9th Coffee with the Mayor and Village Board has been canceled. The next Coffee with the Mayor and Village Board will be Saturday, February 6th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10 a.m. till noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's Office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Trustee Miratado?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Get this off. The Police Department would like to remind residents of the parking regulations within the Village during snowfalls. There is no parking allowed on village streets designated as a snow route for 24 hours after a snowfall of one inch or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 24 hours after a snowfall of two inches or more. There is no parking allowed on any village street for 72 hours after a snowfall of five inches or more. So if you have any questions regarding winter parking restrictions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department, non-emergency number, at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Trustee Pojack?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Republic Services will collect Christmas trees from your curbside during regular garbage and recycling pickup through January 15th. Please remember that all trees must be free of tinsel, Christmas lights, ornaments, and no longer than five feet. If you have any questions, please contact Republic Services at (847) 981-0091. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Trustee Schroeder?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department wants to hear from you, so please take a moment and fill out their online survey and let them know how they can better serve you. To access the survey, please visit www.glandalehighs.org, or visit their Facebook page at The safety of the Glendale Heights residents and community is the number-one priority. If you have any questions, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department non-emergency telephone number at (630) 260-6070. And before I sign off, Linda, I want to tell you what a good job they did on cleaning our streets so fast with the snow that we had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mike, did you have something?
I do, Mayor, thank you very much. We've just received some information that some of our residents have been receiving notices on their doors. They're red, white, and blue, they say water update, sorry we missed you. It's from a water testing service. There is no relationship from this company with the Village. Water Resources has been doing our water meter project, which is nearing completion, and we do not have any other contractors that are doing this type of work. We do have information on our Facebook page in reference to this, so please check out the Village's social media for additional information.
Thank you, Mike. I think David has the surprise for us. Welcome to our 2020 Year in Review.
There's a light in the dark. There's a hope. There's a spark in our hearts that won't go dim. This is where our dreams begin. Cause we, we were born believers. But we were all unstreamers looking towards the sky. Right now, this is where. A falling star fell from your heart and landed in my arms. And I screamed aloud as it tore through the night. It's left me blind. The stars, the moon, they have all been blown out. You left me in the dark. No dawn, no day. I'm always in this twilight in the shadow of your heart. And in the dark, I can hear your heartbeat. I tried to find the sun. But then it stopped and I was in the darkness. So darkness I became. The stars, the moon, they have all been blown out. You left me in the dark. No dawn, no day. I'm always in this twilight in the shadow of your heart. Turn your speakers loud. Feel the energy like lightning coming through the clouds. And your heart just might explode. Oh, whoa, oh, oh, oh. Come on, scream it out. Let them hear you, let them see you. Yeah, you see them now. And it's pulsing through your bones. Oh, whoa, oh, oh, oh. We'll be swimming in stars. We'll be swimming in stars. We'll shoot for the moon. So what if we miss? We'll love the dark and be swimming in stars. Oh, swimming in stars. Oh, swimming in stars. We'll be swimming in stars. We'll be swimming in stars. Oh, yeah. We are wild, we hide. We are wild and we know that it's time to start. Let the spark get here, we go. Oh, whoa, oh, oh, oh. We'll be swimming in stars. We'll be swimming in stars. We'll shoot for the moon. So what if we miss? We'll love the dark and be swimming in stars. Oh, swimming in stars. Oh, swimming in stars. We'll be swimming in stars. We'll be swimming in stars. Swimming in stars. We'll reach for the moon. So what if we miss? We'll love the dark and be swimming in stars. Oh, swimming in stars. Oh, let it think I'm swimming in stars. And be swimming in stars. Oh, swimming in stars. Oh. You're broken down and tired of living life on the merry-go-round. You can find the fighter, but I see it in you. So we can walk it out. Move mountains. We gonna walk it out. And so rise up, I'll rise like the day. I'll rise up, I'll rise unafraid. I'll rise up and I do it a thousand times again. And so rise up high like the waves. I'll rise up in spite of the ache. I'll rise up and I do it a thousand times again. And the silence isn't quiet. And it feels like it's getting hard to breathe. And I know you feel like dying. But I promise we'll take the world to its feet. And move mountains. We can walk it out. Move mountains.
Joy to the world. Joy to the world.
And I will rise a thousand times again. For you, for joy, for you.
Please stay safe and healthy and we will get through this together.
Great job, everyone. I don't usually say anything after the year end. But I just want to put out there. I didn't prepare anything to say, but I want to commend all of our residents, our employees, my fellow board members, for working so hard all year to at least have some normalcy in our lives. Took a lot of planning, a lot of work, and a lot of people volunteering to help. The food distributions have been phenomenal. And staff has been out there. Everyone directing traffic, handing out food. It's, and volunteers from the school districts and the Kiwanis and the library. Just everybody that's participated, everybody that's helped. Thank you so much and thank you for putting so much of yourselves into this because it just shows what a close community we have and how much people care about each other. So as we start off 2021, please stay safe, stay healthy. And we will all make it together. Okay. Now we go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone, Mike, is there anybody in the public?
Uh, there obviously no one here. And also there have been no responses on the website. I don't know if there's anyone on Zoom. No.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Then we will move on. You have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Trustee Sullivan.
Um, move it to the board. Second.
Do you want to change that to motion to?
I know. I lost control. Motion to approve the consent agenda. I don't know where I was.
Second.
Thank you.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
And trustee Schroder.
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. We now go to old business. Number one is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a master power supply agreement to provide full requirement electricity supply and related services for the Village of Glendale Heights electric aggregation program. This is from the November 19th Committee of the Hall. It was tabled at the December 10th, 2020 meeting. So a motion would be in order to remove this from the table. Trustee Schmidt.
I move that we, ah, sorry. Remove this motion from the table for consideration.
Second.
Um, roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
And trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Okay, resolution 2021 dash R dash 06 has been removed from the table. A motion would be in order to approve this resolution. Trustee Sullivan.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I believe there were some questions asked at the last meeting. Mike, do you want to fill in?
Yes, Mayor. There was questions regarding surveying other communities. And we did conduct a survey of approximately 30 communities. 20 responded. All were satisfied with the customer service that they were receiving. Some of them were with Ilago, which was the company we were looking at back on December 10th. Some were with MC Squared. All of them were happy with the customer service they were receiving. Some of the municipalities were receiving a community contribution as has been proposed for us. Some weren't. It all pretty much depended on when they got into the aggregation and the program that they're in right now. Some of the municipalities are due to re, renew their aggregation contract. And hopefully for them, they'll be looking at a very similar situation that we were looking at back on December 10th. If the board does decide to go forward with this, we will have to go and get new numbers. So the numbers that we were talking about on December 10th may not be the numbers that we have finalized. But if the board authorizes this, we'll be able to move on the numbers that we receive. David Hoover is here from NYMEC and can answer any additional questions. One other question that came up, trustee Meritato had asked about being able to pass the savings on to the consumer. There is no program that allows us to do that right now. With the community contribution that is coming back and assuming that there's about as many electric customers as we have utility water billing customers, about 8900, you're talking about $11 a year. With that $109,000, if we were to disperse that amongst every water billing consumer, it's about $11. For the village, at $100,000 in annual community contribution, we can make some progress with some infrastructure that we have and projects that we have that need to be accomplished.
Mike, this is Dave Hoover. If I can just add one, one bit of information. I did check with Ilago today. And they said that they would be able to honor the commitment that they made in December. So the numbers that were available are available tonight from Ilago, should you decide to move forward tonight.
So just to refresh everyone's memory, that would have been at 100% green energy provided to the community, Ilago Energy would be making a civic contribution of $109,000 a year for a two-year contract that we would be looking at.
Does anybody on the board have any questions?
No.
Trustee Meritato.
Okay, so what you're saying is that next year, that price can go down. It's depending on, you know, like you said, 109,000?
Right, so the residents would continue to pay the COMED rate. Every resident in town would continue to pay the COMED rate. And for the two years that we agree to have this aggregation, we would receive $109,000 in each year of the two-year contract.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
So it's a total value of $218,000.
Thanks. Any other questions? Trustee Schroder.
I just have this little question. If I remember correctly, he did say that it could vary from 109,000. It could go down. Are we guaranteed that we're going to get the 109 for two consecutive years without it being reduced at any time?
That is correct. It is contractual and they will commit to that number. What could vary is the COMED rate. The COMED rate will move around a little bit during the two years. And Ilago will match the COMED rate every month. So from a resident's point of view, there's no difference whether they're in this program or at COMED. So there's no financial gain or cost to the resident. And the $109,000 is contractual, it is firm.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Anybody else have questions?
Trustee Light.
I do, Mayor. How will the rates affect our seniors? Will they, I know some of them might be fixed programs and such like that as far as their electric goes. I don't know how much this will affect them. Will it change their rates, up their rates or lower their rates? I mean, I'm not too sure how it'll affect our seniors.
All the COMED rates are set. There's no senior rate or any other rate. So it's a fixed rate that COMED sets annually. And, you know, all residents are charged the same rate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one, Mayor.
Chester.
Uh, how will the rates be, the residents be notified?
Uh, letters.
When will it go into effect?
Uh, the program will go into effect should you move forward tonight. It would take approximately two months for it to go into effect. Residents will be notified by mail. That would occur in about three weeks from now. And they would have the option, if they do nothing, if they take no action, they'd be included in the program. If they choose to opt out, they're given, you know, notice about how to opt out. And if they decide they want to opt out, six months from now, they can opt out. There's no early termination fee. They can opt out at any time they want.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor to approve resolution 2021 dash R dash 06. And it's been seconded, so I guess we are ready for a roll call vote.
Trustee Light.
No.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
And trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Resolution 2021 dash R dash 06 is approved. Now go on to new business. And number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business. It will be instead of items two to nine, it is items two through five. So we go on to number two. Well, don't they vote on that? Which isn't, oh, no. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'm here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Um, motion to waive first readings on item new business, items two to five.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
And trustee Light.
Yes.
First reading is waived on new business items two through five. Number two is an ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to 65 ILCS five slash 11 dash one dash six. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2021 dash 01. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
And trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Ordinance 2021 dash 01 is approved. Number three is an ordinance approving an operations manual policy regarding the prohibition of sexual harassment and other forms of harassment and discrimination. First reading has been waived. This is ordinance number 2021 dash 02. Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mayor.
Chester.
Mayor, I'm looking at this under new business. They're showing the ordinance as 2020. Shouldn't it be 21 on all of these?
It is.
Mine shows 2020.
Oh, really? No, it says 21, Chester.
Chester, if you could change that, mine says 2021 also. So it should be 2021 dash 02.
Yeah, I'm looking at the board docs, the schedule, and it's showing 2020. Okay, I'll change it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
And trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Ordinance 2021 dash 02 is approved. Number four is an ordinance to authorize the issuance of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Schnitzel Plats located at 729 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. First reading has been waived. This would be ordinance number 2021 dash 03. Trustee Schroder.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Just so that everybody is aware, this gets renewed every year. So it doesn't mean that with the restrictions that are on that, we're telling them they can go ahead and do it. It's simply done every year as long as there's no problems at the establishment. So it is up for a vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
And trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Ordinance 2021 dash 04 is approved. Number five is an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit the operation of an open sales lot with outdoor storage of vehicles, automobile repair, and ancillary automobile laundry located at 271 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This would be Millennium Auto Sales. It is from the December 10th, 2020 Committee of the Hall. First reading has been waived. This would be ordinance number 2021 dash 04. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojak.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
And trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Ordinance 2021 dash 04 is approved. Number six, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights approving a tax increment redevelopment plan and redevelopment project for the Army Trail Calvary redevelopment project area. This is first reading. Number seven, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois designated the Army Trail Calvary redevelopment project area of said village, a redevelopment project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act. This is first reading. And number eight is an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois adopting tax increment allocation financing for the Army Trail Calvary redevelopment project area. This is first reading. Number nine, a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number four for the purchase of SIBA Leaks by Loggers and SIBA Leaks by Lager programmer unit for the water meter replacement program for the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This would be resolution number 2021 dash R dash 07. And I believe Water Resources is here tonight to answer any questions you might have. So does anybody have any questions?
They actually have a short presentation as well, Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mike, I interrupted you.
No, I'm sorry, I apologize. I was just saying that they have a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Water Resources has a brief presentation as well.
Okay.
He has to unmute.
Mike or Anthony, I don't know which one of you are going to.
Is it working, Mike?
There we go.
Anthony is getting it started.
Okay.
There we go. Okay, thank you. If everyone can hear me, I just want to say thank you, Mayor Jackson and Board of Trustees, again, for allowing us a brief opportunity to discuss the SIBA Leaks by Loggers with you. Anthony has posted in front of you here two pages. This first page that we're looking at is essentially the product spec sheet for the SIBA loggers. If you see in the photo up in the upper right, that is what one of the leaks by loggers looks like. It's a device that's an acoustic listening device that gets magnetically coupled to a, to a valve, either in an auxiliary valve vault or in a mainline valve vault. You can see that there's a cable on the logger. And that cable gets connected to an R900 pit version MIU. These MIUs are very similar to the MIUs or radio transmitters that are connected to all the water meters in all the homes and businesses. These loggers will get plate and they can either be left in one location for a brief period of time, several days to several weeks, or they can be left in a location for an extended period of time. The units listen overnight during the overnight hours, typically between midnight and 4:00 AM when the ambient noise in the area is the quietest. AM, when the ambient noise in the area is the quietest. And the units use the Neptune Fix Network meter reading system with the Gateway Data Collectors to report their data relative to potential leaks, basically noise levels and frequencies regarding individual leaks. They report that back through the network into the Neptune 360 software platform where the village staff, and I understand obviously Jeff McCumber is on the call tonight, staff like Jeff, Rachel, Roman and others can review the software and the reports from the leak spies for analysis of individual leaks and prioritization to go check those out, correlate and pinpoint and dig them up and repair them so that minimal amounts of water is lost. I think that's it for the first page. Anthony has just forwarded us on now to the second page and this is basically a sample of a GIS map showing what some of the leak spies can look like in a GIS rather mapping program. They're color coded to help for better analysis by the staff with different colors representing potential large leaks, medium leaks, small leaks and loggers showing no leaks. So this helps very well visually for the staff in looking at the loggers, where they're located and which ones might be indicative of a leak and could generate analysis and review by the staff. So that essentially is our brief presentation, but we are here to answer any questions that you might have before entertaining moving forward with this change order.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Trustee Meritato.
Mike, is there a way we can get a copy of those two pamphlets?
Yes, we'll get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, trustee Schmidt.
That's okay. So basically, this is listening for like gurgling going on at hours when things are supposed to be quiet and looking for leaks in the water system? Is that correct?
Yes, essentially. And Anthony, if you want to jump in and unmute yourself at any time, I know you have a little more experience working with these devices, maybe you can help provide some additional answers.
So like Mike mentioned, you know, the leak spies are programmed to listen at night. That's the time of day that there's no ambient background noise. So a leak has a specific sound and megahertz that it creates when it's basically going through the broken pipe. So that's what they're listening for. They're listening for a high pitched noise due to the water, you know, leaking out of the water main.
Okay, now if you're listening, you hear this high pitched noise, how do you identify the location of the leak then?
Well, the leak spies are basically spread basically a thousand feet from each other. So after the system notifies you that there's a leak heard on a specific leak spy, then you'd have to actually go out there with correlating equipment and actually pinpoint the leak. So these systems basically will let you know that there's a leak in this general area. It doesn't actually tell you exactly where it's at. That's when basically you hire a correlation company to come out there and actually pinpoint the leak for you.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, I have, I've been...
Chester. Chester.
He's been breaking up with his report, but say a resident calls and his water meter is extra high this month. How does he tell, how does that work? Does he put that logger over by the resident's home or what?
So these loggers are for the water main distribution system.
You're breaking up, I can't hear you.
It's not for the residence, Chester. It's for the...
These devices are for the water main distribution system, not for the actual water going through the water meter into a person's home.
All right, thank you.
Am I breaking up for everybody or just trustee Bojack?
I heard it.
I think it's just trustee Bojack.
Okay.
Yes.
In trustee Bojack's situation, that question he asked, the water meter has a leak indicator in it. So if the resident had a leak within the home, the resident can actually look at their meter and see that there's a dial on there that will actually show that there's a leak in the home.
Is that new?
That's, all the new meters that we've installed, yes, have that leak indicator on them.
Oh, that's great, okay.
Any further questions? Roll call vote. Oh, no. I need a motion. Motion would be in order to approve Resolution 2021-R-07. Trustee Schmidt.
So moved.
Second.
No more discussion, anybody?
No.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
And trustee Bojack.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-R-07 is approved. We are now back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone, is there anyone in the public that has tried to contact us?
Not via email, Mayor.
Nothing? Thank you. The next item would be a motion to adjourn. Trustee Sullivan.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
Trustee Bojack.
Yes.
And trustee Schroder.
Yes.
This motion, this motion, this meeting is adjourned and see you again on the 21st. Does Pat have to read this again since you've already read it? Committee of the Hall. Trustee Meritato. All yours.
I'd like to call the Committee of the Hall meeting of January 7th, 2021. Notice present.
So noted. You don't have to read that, Pat.
Okay, I was just going to tell you.
Because I...
I asked you to read it.
I read it and included Committee of the Hall when I read my intro, so you're fine.
Good, because this was signed with Linda Jackson. Okay, is there any public comment? Mike, anybody?
Nothing on email.
Nothing? Okay. Go to committee recommendations, which is no recommendations, and we'll go to see discussion regarding proposed to amend the multifamily licensing regulations. That'd be Joanne.
That would be Joanne.
Yes.
Good evening. The Village of Glendale Heights adopted the rental ordinances in 2003 and the village requires both single family homes and multifamily homes to obtain rental licenses. The multifamily regulations are for both apartment complexes and condominium complexes. So if there's a condominium complex that has, condominium building that has three or more units, they are required to get a rental license. The reason for that is the village does do inspections of common areas and exterior and parking lots and all of those items. One of our condominium complexes has, although they've paid for years, they did indicate that they, in reading the ordinance, they disagreed that the licenses is required. We believe that the code does require the license and we did talk to them extensively. However, the ordinance, in discussing it, we do understand that it can be a little bit confusing. It did require quite a bit of explanation. So staff is just recommending or getting, requesting direction from the village board to move forward with clarifying the ordinance. It wouldn't change any of the regulations, it would just help explain it better for our condominium complexes and our multifamily apartments and other individuals who are trying to understand the ordinance. Sometimes things are written and they can always be improved to be a little more clear. So if anyone has any questions about it, let me know and I would ask to put this on the next village board agenda.
Okay, Joanne, do we, how do we do this? By mail or how do we notify them that we're doing this?
Actually, we would not notify them because they're not, we are not changing the rules in any way. The rules are the same rules that we've been following since 2003, so it would not require any change. We have already mailed out the renewal notices and they're coming in, they're due by the end of the month. This is really a clarification, so no change to the rules whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions?
I have one question. The group that's denying that they don't want licensing, isn't that because every unit in that building is owned and the residents are living in it and it is not rented, they're not renting? Isn't that why they're protesting this licensing?
No, actually it's not. The complex that's protesting it, it's about, little over half of the units are rental units, so they are...
Oh, I thought I had read that they were all, you know, owned and the resident, the owners lived in the building.
No, there are over a hundred of the units are rental units in the complex.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, being answered, what do we have to do? Move this to the, move it to the board? Need a recommendation?
Bill? I move, we move this to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call? Roll call? Back?
President Jackson?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Bojack?
Yes.
And trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on. Is there any other business? Okay, being done, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
On favor?
I know.
Take a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Meritato?
Yes.
Trustee Bojack?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
And President Jackson?
Yes.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.